To call this meeting to order, February 24th, the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. And we'll start off with a Pledge of Allegiance. Put your hand over your heart, follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God grant me the serenity to accept the things that cannot change, the wisdom, the courage to change the things that can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Amen.
We'll call, please.
President Jim Ferryman.
President.
Vice President Robert Uten.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Director Mike Schaefer.
Here.
And Director Art Perry.
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have any late communications?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Public comments. This is a time has been set aside for persons in the audience to make comments on items on the subject matter. Anyone care to address our board? Seeing none, we'll move along to consent calendar. Any questions on the consent?
Move for approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing. General Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda is reclassifying the part-time accounting clerk position to a full-time status. Giving this report will be Caitlin Tran, our Finance Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Board. As you know, this report was presented to you at the study session earlier this month. From September 2015 to May 2019, the Finance Department consists of three full-time positions: the Finance Manager, the Senior Accountant, and the Administrative Assistant. Due to unanticipated events last fiscal year, the department came to consist of two full-time and a part-time position. Maintaining the recording and accounting duties required by the Finance Department with only a part-time accounting clerk has been a challenge. The accounting clerk is limited to working 20 hours a week, which does not provide adequate time to assist the Finance Department with other duties. The past few years, the volume of invoices that accounts payable processes has increased. Also payroll processing requires an increased amount of time to complete. In addition to accounts payable and payroll, the Finance Department also needs assistance processing accounts receivable, posting cash receipts, generating and analyzing financial reports, scanning backup documents to Springbrook, and providing support to the Finance Department when team members are out on leave. Currently, if a staff member goes out on leave, this results in one employee to manage all the duties of the Finance Department. Reclassifying the part-time accounting clerk position to a full-time will provide additional support for the department during the absence of staff and to help increase efficiency and effectiveness throughout the department on a daily basis. If the Board approves the full-time accounting clerk position, the recruitment will start in March, and the new incumbents will have a target start date in May. There are sufficient funds available in both the solid waste and wastewater funds to cover for the last two months of the current fiscal year salaries and benefits. As for fiscal year 2020-21, there is $29,000 budgeted in the part-time salaries and benefits account. Staff estimates the full-time accounting clerk fully burdened cost is $74,500. Staff is proposing a budget adjustment from the following accounts: the anti-scavenging, tuition reimbursement, incentive pay, and contingency accounts to salaries and benefits accounts, a total of $45,500 between both funds. The report shows details of all the accounts. Staff recommends that the Board of Directors consider approving reclassifying the part-time accounting clerk position to a full-time status.
Move of approval.
I have some questions.
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Yeah, a couple questions.
Okay, the 74, is that the entering amount that person would receive, or is there like a salary schedule based on the number of years?
That, we don't know what's the starting salary, how much we'll pay. Well, we have the range, but with this number, it's not the beginning rate. So it may be less than the 74.
Have we made up a salary schedule?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is that not included here, is it?
The salary range is not included in the report.
Do you happen to know what the beginning, would it be a beginning salary, or based on their experience?
Based on their experience.
So the max would be 74.5? Is that the max?
No, it's not.
You happen to know what the max would be?
If you give me some minutes, I can get that for you.
You mean, you do that tonight, you mean?
Yeah.
Give us a few minutes, we can give that before you make your decision tonight.
I'm just curious what the beginning salary would be in a first-year person that doesn't have as much experience versus the ending amount of money that they're going to be receiving.
Arlene had a question.
Yeah. Do you have a benchmark on what other areas, what other sanitary districts do for something like this? As far as the position?
Or salary? We did the class and comp study in April, and this is part of the range for the class and comp study, April of last year.
And you based it on what?
Study of the other district.
Study of having like a benchmark, okay. That's what I was asking.
Can we wait until we find that information out? Are they just going to come back with beginning and ending salary schedule? If she said it would just take a few minutes, we could maybe move on and come back to it, if that's okay with you.
I had one quick question to you.
Scott, is that an unreasonable request?
Not at all. What you, we can do, postpone this item right now while staff looks up that information. We can proceed to the next items and come back tonight. That's fine.
Mike had something.
Just real quick. One of your comments, and I tend to agree, that recruiting for a part-time position's going to be tough. I mean, people, I don't know too many people that are looking for part-time work unless they're old or whatever, you know. Does the job classification, in terms of educational experience or professional experience, change from part-time to full-time? In other words, I think I asked at the study session whether that person is required to have a CPA. And I don't, I think you said no.
No, with this position, no.
Even going to a full-time?
No, not CPA.
Okay, so in that course of their employment, based on the track record of the district, do we encourage that person to work towards designations such as CPA or whatever?
We always promote higher education.
Okay.
But again, that position is not required.
Yeah, based on what you'd said in the report, a lot of the work that this person does is recording, especially with new construction and things like that. With all the stuff that's coming down the pike in Costa Mesa, especially Mesa Soco, or whatever they're calling that monstrosity at the other side of the freeway, that's going to increase the workload of this person, I assume.
Can I make a comment? Well, I went to the city council meeting, no, the Waco meeting, and they said that Costa Mesa has to have 12,000 units built in eight years. And they have 3,000 finished already, but then the Soco is like 1,500.
Right.
But the city's required to have 12,000 units built.
Which is part of that July Housing Needs Assessment.
Right, exactly.
That OCOG was fighting against.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I was just concerned that, you know, part-time would have certain requirements, and full-time would have other designation requirements or professional designation. That doesn't apply. I mean, you're still going to work those people towards getting whatever they want to get. So, okay.
There is no, is there a person in the half-time position now?
No. There's only two, the accountant and the finance position field right now.
Okay, so we'll give them a few minutes.
Yeah.
We'll bring it back up. Okay?
Yes.
Let's move along temporarily. Item two, refund of wastewater and solid waste assessment, Bernard Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nabil Guzman will be giving this report.
Good afternoon, President Ferryman, members of the Board. The Board of Directors has previously reviewed Mrs. Sofer's request for a wastewater and solid waste refund to her home on Bernard Street. Her home has been misclassified as a multifamily three-unit home by the City of Costa Mesa, and that information was inputted into the district system. At the January Board meeting, the Board requested that Ms. Sofer submit a revised refund letter because she had not clearly stated the number of years she was seeking a refund for. Attached to the staff report is Mrs. Sofer's updated refund request. She is asking for a 20-year refund of both the wastewater and solid waste assessment charges. Previously, the district had only verified charges going back 15 years, but Mrs. Sofer has provided copies of her paid property taxes for all 20 years. In the staff report, the staff report includes a breakdown of the overpayment by fiscal year. The 20-year refund total is of $10,089.15, with a total of $1,264.15 for the wastewater assessment overpayment, and $8,825 for the solid waste assessment overpayment. If the Board approves any amount to be refunded, it will be paid from the assessment revenue collected this fiscal year. This concludes my report. I am happy to answer any questions. And Mrs. Sofer could not be here today, but I have been in constant contact with her.
Questions?
She also attached a letter to the, that she had concerns about why she might take legal action against us if we don't agree to paying the full amount. So my question to Alan is, did you see that letter that she wrote, Alan?
I'm not sure I did see one letter.
Yeah, the one from, I think it's Mioco.
I don't remember there being a threat of litigation in it, but...
In our board package.
No, I don't.
This is her updated request.
I did see this letter.
I just want to bring it to your attention to see how we think we stand in terms of the decision we make.
Well, again, under the law, it doesn't matter really what the reason is for trash. The law provides that you get one year if you file a claim, and for the sewer, if it's after 1992, you get six months. But the Board has sought fit to go beyond that for extenuating reasons with the Brick claim last month, and that's sort of where we are right now. Are there any extenuating circumstances that would make you want to go beyond your ordinance that you've adopted, limiting refunds?
You might recall Board Directors at the study session meeting, we talked about this, and obviously the Board made a decision on the last request because the Board felt it was our mistake, it was a staff mistake, and so the Board felt we're going to be the good guys here and do the right thing and refund the homeowners on it because of our mistake. This particular situation, we told the Board it's not our mistake, it was the city's mistake on making this. So there's an option, it's not our responsibility, if you want to go down that road and say, hey, this is not our mistake, we apologize for that, it's unfortunate, but, you know, you can make that decision.
Are you in agreement with that, Alan?
Yes, I do believe you are on solid legal ground to deny it, but if you chose to find some extenuating circumstances, we'd defend that in court, but we want you to make the findings as to why you're waiving the statute of limitations and the claim statute.
Any questions in the Board?
Question. Even though the city was, we think is responsible for it, weren't they working for us at that time to tell us what that number was? Because, you know what I mean? Weren't they working for us in the sanitary district? Or not?
I think if they were the, they were acting as the planning department, classifying properties, they wouldn't have been working for us. If they were working for us as a sewer permit specialist, then they would have been working for us. So probably they weren't working for us, but we were relying on their numbers because they are the ones who classify property.
If anything, it would have been public services that would be working for us, you know, doing something in conjunction with us type of thing.
So what is the number that we're going to allow for their, they are going to get something back, right?
That's up to us. Right?
That's what I'm asking.
What did we, what did we do last, if the last, we went back six years for the previous applicant, correct?
No, staff had refunded Mr. Brick four years, and then he requested a 10-year refund. So it was a total of 14 years.
We gave him 14 years refund last time.
You're right, and that was just for wastewater assessments. Mrs. Sofer is asking for both the wastewater and solid waste.
But that was our error, too. It's a little different than this one.
What are the wishes of the Board in this case, having heard the thought process behind what we decided?
I may feel differently than Scott does. I think we have to pay back the responsibility that the city may have aired. I think we have to pay back that amount of money. That's what I would propose. Is that total like $8,000?
It's a total of $10,000.
That's how I, because the last recipient of the money, we went back 14 years, even though it was our fault, even though the city, you know, we can just...
Well, then, would we have recourse against the city?
I don't think so. I don't think we want to have any recourse against them. But that means that's where I'm standing now, just based on the previous one that we did, even though I didn't approve, I didn't vote for the prior one, but I think we're kind of stuck to do it on this one, but...
I'll second the motion.
Could we articulate the justification?
Justification is because even though the city did it, we still received the money, and we should refund that money if it wasn't the right obligation for us, even though the city was giving this information, but we received the money from her, or from that family. So that's my justification, but I don't know, is that sufficient enough? I mean, I'm not sure how, we haven't talked about it as a Board, but I think that we have to do that.
I think what we did last month set a precedent for what's occurred, and I said that very clearly last month, that I believe that we are going to see more cases like this until we directly put a policy in that says, we're not going to go back. We've already decided with the previous applicant to give him 14 years. I don't know how we could deny this applicant the same thing.
You know, you and I voted no last time, but I think we have to say yes this time.
Yeah, and I know in the letter we received, it pointed out that I had mentioned something about personal responsibility. I still believe that as a rate payer, any rate payer should keep track of what they're paying. Now, when you look at what she was charged over the last several years, there were no spikes, it was pretty consistent. So to me, the person responsibility part was to recognize that they were all the same. If I saw spikes, you know, if I get my credit card bills every month, I see a spike, I know I'm going to go talk to my wife and figure out why my credit card bill spiked, right? And that's just an illustration of what we should do as responsible payers. But I think what we did last month gives us all, gives us cause to do it again. I mean, a mistake was made, we are the agency responsible for these charges, whether the city did it or not, we still collected the money inadvertently, I guess is the term I'll use, and that was a mistake, no matter who made the mistake. So I agree with Art.
Have we contacted the city at all on this matter, you know?
Staff only contacted the city to verify that they still classify the property as a multifamily three-unit home.
They changed it?
As of December 2019, they still have it classified as a multifamily.
Whose responsibility is it to change it?
That would be the resident's responsibility to go to the city and with the planning department to get their home reclassified.
Would we be fair, and I hate to put any undue pressure or burden on the applicant, but would it be reasonable for us to wait until that is done before we refund this? Once, because it's going to, if it's still being classified as a multifamily, is the applicant going to come back next year and say, look, it happened again? You know, until we have some proof that it's been changed, we're kind of opening it up to them being charged again.
Don't we send in our things?
In our system, I'm sorry.
Our system sends it into the county, though, right?
Correct.
So the city doesn't send it into the county.
Our system has been corrected. It was just the original records came from the City of Costa Mesa.
Okay, so what you're telling me, Nabil, is that on our records, when you send the bill to the county of Orange, it'll be the appropriate amount?
Correct, it has been changed since the first time I spoke with Mrs. Sofer in December.
That makes all the difference in the world to what I just said. Thank you.
Any other questions? entertain a motion?
I made the motion already to pay back the full amount. What does that total, I mean, $8,825?
No, it's, no, it's the two added together.
10. It's $10,089.15.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
I haven't. If you're making that motion, could you also put some kind of factual?
I did already.
Oh, you did?
I did already, because we said, we received the money, we should pay it back, and we can't, even though the city made the mistake, it's our obligation to refund it based on what we did the last time we had this come before us.
Okay, so that's our finding.
That's my finding, if the Board accepts that. You can add to it if you need to.
I don't know if it'd be part of the motion, but I'd mentioned this last month, is I really am imploring staff to come back to us with a stated, if we don't already have it, district policy. Now, you talked about the statute of limitations already being on the, but I think we need to specifically address overcharges like this and come up with something that we can all agree on going forward.
We have a policy right now that basically says, the limitations are in place. So you're waiving the policy you've adopted as Chapter 9.02. If you want us to try and create exceptions...
Okay, I got you.
It might be better if you articulated why you're waiving it, and then we'll defend it in court if we can.
We always have the option of sticking by the six-month.
You do, but I mean, your point is well-taken, that each time you give one of these, it comes harder and harder to say no. But that's...
I got you.
Not a legal matter.
Okay, then, I'm not imploring you anymore. I'm standing by what's already there.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move along. Award the communication support and strategy.
Mr. President, if we can, we can go back to item number one now. I do believe Caitlin gave you the information, so Caitlin...
Before you move on, I know the applicant from the last item is here. Can you just maybe address how the process, I'm sorry, Jim, but can we address how this is going to be handled to get them the refund?
The Board approved this, so Finance will cut a check.
Okay, I just want, they looked, you know, like they needed some reassurance, so you guys will contact the applicant.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I say something? So I think that there was some misunderstanding on...
If you could go on the podium and address who you are, please, for the record.
Shima Sofer Barand. I think there was some misunderstanding on who the applicant was. I think that you thought it was Sid's daughter, which is me, but it's actually my mother.
Right.
So I won't go into detail, but for many reasons, thank you so much for this and that we can move on with this. This is my mother, so this is the applicant. Thank you.
I was your neighbor on Arbor Street, and your dad used to park his cars in our driveway. And I remember you as a little girl.
And I remember your dad giving me a hard time when I was a city council member, so I'm sure you realize that.
Yes, he did.
Yes, he did.
I had a hard time, too.
Especially with all the money I spent at the...
You see, at 3:00 in the morning, phone calls.
But I'm sure you'd be happy to tell everyone, talking about it, and then you're talking about it.
We loved Sid. We loved Sid.
No, we did. Okay. Where are we here?
But the number one, Mr. President.
Go back to number one.
We're going back to number one on the county clerk position, so we'll turn it back over to Caitlin Tran.
So for this fiscal year, the minimum for the accounting clerk is $48,984. That's the starting. And that's not include benefits.
Doesn't include benefits?
And the max for the accounting clerk is $66,128. And that does not include benefits as well.
How much do you figure the benefits are?
About 30, 35%. And so the $74,500, that is for next fiscal year budget.
So that's a step 27, the range 27?
Yes.
So is it a four-step, goes to 30 is the max?
There's, we went away from step.
No, these, I mean, the range, because it says 27 to 30. Is that the highest range that goes, Scott, or do you know?
It's within the range 27, so the starting is 48, and the max is 66. And so that position can't, as for salaries, can't go beyond $66,128.
That's on 27.
We don't have any positions in...
Yes, right here.
No, I mean, we don't have them in 28, 29.
I know, but those are from the same one, aren't they?
Yeah.
Oh, so those are different positions? Because as I read it, it looks like it's under the account clerk.
Yeah, the way that the class and comp study, the report, is a little confusing, but for line 28, 29, 30, there's no position in those.
Okay, so that doesn't go from 27 to 28 the next year?
No.
Goes on the way we've been doing it? Okay, that makes more sense.
So you don't need action from us?
Yes, we do.
Oh, you do?
There was a motion in a second.
Bob made a motion. I think Caitlin seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item three, award communication support and strategy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nabil Guzman will be giving this report.
President Ferryman, members of the Board, before you, as a recommendation to award the communication support and strategy contract to the successful bidder, after a competitive RFP process, district staff and the solid waste ad hoc committee are recommending the communications firm Tripeppy Smith has awarded the contract. The district released a communication support and strategy RFP in December 2019. After the top three proposals were interviewed, the ad hoc committee requested district staff to revise the scope of services and request a revised 12-month proposal. District staff reviewed and condensed the scope of services for the contract, not to change the overall scope of the work, but to provide better direction and clarity to the project. The district's mission is to protect our community's health and environment by providing solid waste and wastewater collection services. Staff is unable to carry out its mission without the participation of its residents. A communications firm is needed to assist staff with increasing program awareness, increasing district visibility recognition among district residents, implementing a consistent and effective social media presence, gaining tools and knowledge and effective outreach methods, establishing public relations with related agencies like the City of Costa Mesa and City of Newport Beach, and increasing knowledge of effective outreach methods to maximize resident engagement. and increasing knowledge of effective outreach methods to maximize resident engagement. The district cannot continue to operate as a ghost agency. For the 2019 citizen survey, only twenty-eight percent of residents surveyed knew what CMSD does. Staff and the committee believe that the most qualified and cost-effective firm to assist the district is Tripepe Smith. This firm has excessive experience in providing communication services to various local government agencies and is prepared to assist staff in carrying out the district's mission and goals. The one-year cost for this contract is eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty, and staff has identified additional costs for social media boost, annual email service subscription, and printing, so the total project cost is ninety-four thousand. This project was not budgeted for, but staff has found savings in both the wastewater and solid waste accounts to fund this contract and related expenses. Additionally, staff met with CRNR last week and talked about this project. Since the increased awareness and participation in district programs is of direct benefit to CRNR, they will be donating nineteen thousand towards the cost of this project. The revised scope of services listed an optional add-on to provide website redesign services and website content support. Staff believes this service is needed, because as residents learn about the district and programs, they will be directed to our website to learn more. Currently, our website is very basic and not user-friendly or easy to navigate to get more information. The total cost to redesign the district's website and provide twelve-month content and technical support with Tripepe Smith is an additional thirty thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Staff will wait to exercise this option until June. If there are any savings in both the wastewater and solid waste funds, staff would like to reallocate the money towards funding this website project. This concludes my report. I am available to answer any questions. And Ryder Smith from the firm is also here, available to answer any questions the board may have.
Just had a question about CRNR. Is this a new fee for them?
Correct. They annually give us thirty-five thousand dollars for education and outreach. This nineteen thousand towards, this additional nineteen thousand is specifically for the Tripepe Smith contract.
So, that's additional to what they're gonna give us already?
Correct. To what they have already given us.
Did that conversation go okay, or were they in total agreement with it?
Yes, Nabilah and myself had lunch with Dean last week and laid out the plan for him, and he was okay with it.
He believes in this project and believes that the district can help its residents make more educated decisions, so CRNR receives the end product. So, he believes in this project and agreed to contribute nineteen thousand.
Art? Where is this firm located, Tripepe Smith?
Intestine, they're based off of.
Close by.
Close by.
Bob?
Well, you know, I think we have to approve this contract. We have some thirteen different programs that are budgeted and approved, and we have not had a lot of success communicating to the public to get them to do these programs. So, you know, these thirteen programs or so are policies that the board has approved. We have a grant from Integrated Waste Management Commission for some fifty thousand dollars that addresses three of the programs. The batteries, fluorescent bulbs, and the, and one other program, I think household hazardous waste. We've expanded the household hazardous waste program. CRNR, like Nabilah said, you know, gives us thirty-five thousand dollars a year, further contract for education. I don't know what you fed Dean at that luncheon, but he's agreed to cough up another nineteen thousand dollars that'll lower this cost. I think that this is a program that staff has a lot of disparate, a lot of different focuses, and what this is, is a way to communicate those focuses much more effectively. There are more players in the staff report. You mentioned Newport Beach and Costa Mesa. I think CRNR needs to be at the table when this thing, when this process starts. We need to understand what CRNR wants for that nineteen thousand dollars. Tripepe has worked with CRNR and the city of Orange, and I'm interested in, you know, what that process was, whether it's related to what we're asking them to do. CRNR, the city of Costa Mesa, I don't care about the city of Newport Beach, and OCC needs to be at the table. And what I would like to see is a communication plan, which Tripepe has agreed to do, and I think the staff has asked for that. But what I'd like to also see, they said they would do a detailed work plan. What I would like that to mean is that not only is the communication plan has goals, but the tactics to achieve each of those goals needs, with deadlines, needs to be put together. You know, I don't know, the website, you know, I think, I don't, I'm not interested in yet in having Tripepe Smith involved in the website redesign. I think we need to hire them for the communication efforts that staff thinks is necessary, and I believe is necessary for public health and then, and the organics program. And I think, you know, that's the main two concepts that staff is asking for help for. I envision that once this is done, you know, staff will have a lot more focus and a lot more ability to get focused, you know, on additional programs, you know, that we do in the future, so. As I've listened to these consultants, you know, I think they could all do the job, but I'm in agreement with Tripepe as a consultant to help us with this project, help staff with the project, and help bring to light the thirteen or fourteen policies that this board has said that they're interested in. Eleven of them, ten or eleven of them in the solid waste area, and then, and several of them in the wastewater area, but, so.
Thank you. Did you have some, did you want to address the board on this subject? No? If you did, you gotta fill out one of those forms.
Yeah, fair enough. I'm happy to fill out the form regardless, but I'll defer to staff certainly, but I'm readily available to answer any and all questions.
And you're representing?
I am representing Tripepe Smith. I'm actually the Smith of Tripepe.
He's the owner.
Any questions?
I'll just throw in from the ad hoc committee. I don't think it's a secret, this was not, at the first go-around, this was not the firm that we selected as the favorite. After Nabilah and the rest of the staff did the revised scope, which was done very well, I mean, it was more direct, to the point, what we needed and everything. It was obvious that Tripepe Smith was the one we needed to pick. The original one that we were gonna bring to you as a recommendation, her proposal tripled? Almost tripled. So, I don't know where the disconnect was, but having a local agency, the other two were from out of the county, having a local agency that's had local experience, that, like Bob said, has worked with CRNR and worked with some of the, OCSD, you worked with OCSD as well.
Everything executive management team this morning.
I U A knows.
So, I'm with Bob, and I think staff's recommendation for Tripepe Smith is the way to go.
Anybody else have a comment, Art?
I can question, what was the change of the scope to make you make that decision?
It was just more concise and more to the point of what we were looking to do. I think the first time, it was more of a general idea of how we could improve our presence. This one was more specific, and it's in your pocket, but it was more specific to the ideas that we wanted to portray. I think it answered some of the concerns that you guys had brought up as well.
That's why we had the ad hoc committee to make, help us make this decision.
Yeah, and I will tell you that I'm, through the ad hoc committee, I think the ad hoc committee process worked really well. Elodie and Mahdi contributed. Elodie especially did a really good job of answering or asking the questions that should have been asked, so. I think it was unanimous. All of us felt Tripepe Smith was the way to go.
Art? Are you still gonna continue with the ad hoc committee for ideas for additional things? Remember, I brought that up last meeting at the study session.
I think it really depends on, what I had asked the ad hoc, asked staff at our last ad hoc committee was, once we make this decision, if we're gonna do this, that there's gotta be some programs, some ideas, some, and I'd asked staff to put together a special meeting to have Tripepe Smith present to us, to the five of us, and that, once we do that, I think we can determine whether we still need the ad hoc.
Well, I think the original idea for the solid waste ad hoc committee was to get some understanding of why CRNR has so many missed trash pickups. So, I think we still.
And other ideas to generate more, increase on the sixty-two percent, that was more ideas to get more.
And I think we still need to discuss these things.
That's why I like the ad hoc committee continuing if needed.
And my concern would be on the public relations part, that we get known better in the community.
That's a goal. That's a goal.
And also the, what we're doing with CRNR, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
We need a motion, Jim?
I think we do. I'll move that we approve the budget adjustment of twenty-eight thousand solid waste fund of forty-seven in the wastewater fund and authorize the general manager to enter into the agreement with Tripepe Smith.
Second.
Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a smart guy. He named the company after his wife. It's pretty smart.
Item four, provide direction regarding.
Don't already said that.
Termination provision of the district engineer agreement.
Thank you, Mr. President. To give you a little bit of history background regarding this issue, so Rob Hamers was a district engineer for decades, starting in nineteen eighty-one. He owned and operated the firm Robin B. Hamers and Associates. In nineteen ninety-two, which I'm gonna refer Robin Hamers, so it's R B H. So, in nineteen ninety-two, R B H had a contract with the district to also perform services as the district manager that provided that the agreement could only be terminated for cause, which included death of the principal, his physical or mental incapacity, R B H bankruptcy, or if R B H refuses to perform. In two thousand and nine, R B H reverted back to being only the district engineer. The contract provided that Robin Hamers was to perform all services personally or use assistance under his supervision. It also required fourteen days' notice if Robin Hamers left the firm, and the district had the right to terminate if it gave notice within three days. It also provided that if R B H was terminated, it would be given six months' notice and allowed to perform services during that period. A month of three-months' billings for immediate termination, it would also be allowed. There was no specific mention of death in the two thousand and nine agreement. In two thousand and fifteen, in response to the changing law on independent contractors, the agreement was revised to delete the provisions that require Robin Hamers to perform all services personally. The provision was left in the agreement that if Robin Hamers left the firm, that he would be given fourteen days' notice and allowed to terminate within three days. So, recently, we attempted to address the interim process that the board wanted to try for six months. The board suggested changing the agreement to provide thirty-day termination notice without cause, and that's basically because it's a standard language in all our agreements. It's a standard language we have in our district council agreements. It's a standard language we have in our district treasurer's agreement. Mr. Benesh, who is now the president of R B H, Michael Benesh, did not agree with the change to terminate the provision to thirty days, so that's why we're here today. So, there's a dispute or disagreement, I suppose that would disagreement. So, the board needs to determine what Mr. Benesh's position is on the contract, and if he asserts that he has a right to six months' notice before the contract can be terminated, the board may consider giving the termination notice now to have a contract wound down to by the time the six-month trial period expires. That way, if we don't, if you want to, if you believe that he deserves the six months like Rob, then at the end of that six-month trial period, we have to give the six months' notice, therefore, he's still on, working for us for December, or if we terminate immediately, we owe him three months' worth of pay. So, that's the decision we need from the board today, is do you want to give Michael Benesh the six-month termination clause, or we need Rob Hamers? Or are you in agreement with a thirty-day clause, like all the other standard agreements? So, that's what we need, this direction tonight, and I'm sure Michael Benesh will want to address you as well, so.
Questions of the board? Bob?
Well, you know, I think the sanitary district board has the ability to slow down R B H if we choose to, because we approve every contract, the board has to approve every contract with R B H, with a negotiated or agreed upon sum. So, I think that leaving the contract as it is, we still have the ability to say, "You're not going to get contract X." And that, you know, that will begin to develop into a process where, you know, R B H could be removed from our consulting engineering services. I don't see any reason to make a change now. I think the board, the sanitary district and the sanitary district governing board has all the power it needs that if staff or the board is disgruntled with R B H in the future, we don't have to give them contracts. And the contract, you know, the contract language be what it may. But I think the board can approve or not approve, we do approve or not approve, all the contracts that are issued to R B H.
Ellen, is that pretty much right on, or no?
Actually, I would agree with what Director Rootin said, but I would disagree that that would be the course to go. Since the board, there may be some residual rights in that contract, and certainly, we can, you know, adjust the work we send, but there's maybe other items that are more ministerial that should go to the district engineer. And there's really no downside to giving six months' notice right now. You can, at the end of the six months, say, "You know what? We want to give you exactly the same contract." But at least you have the right to do it then. Whereas, if you decide in six months, you want something different, then the corporation could say, "We were entitled to six months. Wind down."
One half dozen of the other? Current contract calls for what, Bob? For them to continue what they're doing?
Yeah, basically, I think what the board's direction was, maybe at the last board meeting was, that we are going to continue with R B H for six months. You know, I still believe that should be the premise.
And that means not introducing the new concept of termination?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a, I don't have a sense that that's needed. We, as a board, can, if we're dissatisfied with R B H, you know, we can take some action to remove them from our processes.
That's kind of where I came in, after reading the material, that's kind of where I was.
But then, if we were dissatisfied after six months, then they would still have three more months added on to that.
And in that case.
As precedence.
And in that case, then, in the next six months, I wouldn't award them any contracts. During that, during that particular six months, the extension, we didn't have to award them any contracts.
But we would still pay them for three months. We would still be paying them for three months, whereas, under the revised contract, we would only pay them for thirty days.
I would hope that all of our contracts that have this provision in it have severance. I would hope that all of our contracts that have this, this provision in it have severance, severance functions, and this is just a severance function.
To me, what we're doing, if we went along with this, that we're setting a precedence where the others that have come before us, or didn't come before us actually, but have been there longer, that they go along with six months, and they don't, you know, they can get cut off, period, without the three months.
Talking about, if I may clarify a little bit, I think what Vice President Uten and Craig Wong is talking about not giving any more contracts is our CIP projects, right? So we see, we will, or the general manager will approve the design or the contract administration for, for a CIP project. And that's true, and what Vice President says, yes, we can, we could say, no, we're not going to give you those contracts anymore. However, he's still a district engineer. He's still on the payroll. You still got to give him six months if you don't change the termination clause. So yes, we can do all of his work, but he's still going to be here for another six months if we don't, if we want to terminate. So what we're saying is, do standard clause that we do with other contract, give him the 30-day clause, we'll still go out to six months, we'll still do the six months, and we'll report back in six months. Here we are, but at least have that 30-day clause in there, not the six months. It gives us, it ties our hands up.
Happens after six months, and then he asks for three more?
No. If you amend the contract now, just that's a preliminary provision for 30 days, and after six months, we terminate, we give him 30 days. It's over. It's done. Okay? Or if we, if we want to continue, then we'd come back and negotiate and continue for another six months of the year.
And, Mr. President, could I just advise the board that when we did seek to go to the, do something different with the inspection services, that we did get a response back that, I'm not sure you can do that under my contract, reduce my work like that. So there was an issue there where it was being asserted that we didn't have the right to reduce his work. So we, we strongly suggest that you wind down the contract with the notice, and then you can decide to give whatever term you want after that, but at least you can negotiate from a position of strength and not with the thought that you have to give three months' severance pay if you terminate early, or six months more to perform the work. This isn't a mean thing, this is just putting his contract. At one time, Rob was treated just about like an employee, where you couldn't fire him unless he did a crime. I mean, it was, it was really hard to defend the contract he had. It was, but he was such a loyal, dedicated employee that he was, somehow he got that previous to when I worked for the board. And then they reduced it to where he got six months' notice, which is very generous. And now, you know, like Mark and I, we serve it 30 days. You know, for 25 years, we've been serving you with the thought that if you don't like us, you can fire us on 30 days' notice, and that's, that just seems like the standard in the professional industry. And, and the, I think Michael wants to address.
I was going to say, Mike, would you like to address the board?
Sure. President, board members. The, when I agreed to take over for Rob Hamers and Associates as president, I agreed also to abide by the contract we had, and, and I'm willing to do that. Where this came about was I was asked to sign a piece of paper ratifying that I was now the district engineer and take care of that, but there was also provisions to modify the contract, which was something we had not discussed. So I declined. I'm more than happy to do whatever you want to do, but I think there should be some discussion and a little bit of back and forth before we, we change things wholesale.
Yeah, I, I don't see this as adversarial at all. It's just mechanically, we've got to get the thing put, put together, and so it's serviceable. Any, any other thoughts?
I just, kind of harkening back to what, what Alan just said, Mark Davis and Alan Burns are on one contract, and Rob is on a different contract. And I understand the reason for Rob being on that other contract. I mean, Rob was Costa Mesa Sanitary District. From a consistency and transparency standpoint, I think we need to align all of our contracts the same. And I think we need to adjust RBH's contract with a 30-day notice like we have with our other two professionals. I just think that that's, our ratepayers are going to look at this and go, wait a minute, why are you doing? I mean, I know what Mr. Moser would say if he were here. And I have all the confidence in the world in Mike and what's going to happen. I just think we need to be more consistent. I'll be honest with you, I think we should have done that with Rob before. We should have put him on a 30-day. But I understand why we didn't, and I had no problem with that. But I just feel we ought to be consistent with all of, all of our contracts.
But we wouldn't be starting the termination process now. We would just ask them to sign the contract for the 30 days.
We have to give him the six, the termination? I mean, can't we just, if he agrees?
He agrees the 30 days, we could write a new contract up.
We just do a new contract.
Yeah, that would be fine. I mean, you get the same place, you get to the same place, but you don't have the negativity of terminating somebody's contract.
Right. Right.
Which is not being personal, it's just to align the contracts.
I, I think in fairness to everybody, especially our two professionals over here, we need to be consistent with everybody.
Well, you don't need to be fair to us. We've been very fair to us. We've had no problem for 25.
I'll remember that, Alan.
As long as the ratepayers think we're fair, I'm okay, whether you think it's fair or not.
Well, we just recorded what you said.
What are the wishes of the board?
I think that they should go back, negotiate the contract, and come, and go to the 30-day.
Yeah, I do, too.
Can we get that representation? Are, are you willing to go to the 30 days?
Yeah, eventually I am. But if we're renegotiating the contract, maybe we should talk about some other items, too.
Ask them to go back and renegotiate and come back to us again.
Well, what I would recommend then, as we refer this matter to the next study session, the, the engineering right now is woefully slow. I mean, we're doing a third of the, you know, with the, with what happened to Rob. You know, we have got to get that back up on, you know, the upswing. Well, I think we have to give Mike some time to get that all out of those. But I think, I think, I think it's, I think we should come back to the study session and give Mike and, and staff time, you know, to think if there's any other positives that should be added to the contract.
Mr. President, could I just add that you're already evaluating their services to determine what the contract will look like? So it might be premature to write the contract of, for the six-month period until after the six-month period's over, when you decide you folks have done really well in all these areas, we're going to farm this out, or we're going to keep everything with you, or we're going to hire somebody that sits at a desk at Costa Mesa Sanitary District. But that's what the six-month period is about, so it'd be hard to negotiate the contract right now before you've had the trial period, and I think you want to have the trial period. I think both sides need the trial period.
Hey, coming back to us in six months?
We're saying you have two options. You can either give them the notice now, the six months' notice, is what Alan's saying, or we can amend the contract with 30-day termination clause.
But that doesn't renegotiate the whole contract?
No.
Then you would want to renegotiate the whole contract after the six-month period.
Kind of going back to what Mike said about, there are other issues that need to be in the contract. That's going to be part of that six-month process, then?
No, that could be after the six months. If we want, after the six months, we want to keep them, then we can go back and negotiate.
But right now, all you're asking us to do is to take a look at the 30-day termination provision. That's all we're doing.
All it is.
I'm guessing.
Well, I didn't, I wasn't directing that, you and Mike, I apologize. But that's what we're doing, right?
I'm suggesting that the cleanest thing is to give the termination notice now, so that you have all the luxury to work out a new contract. You have the unpleasantness of giving a termination notice, but it gives you the right then to do whatever contract you want to do after that. If you don't, if we negotiate an interim contract, and then later you're going to negotiate a final contract, the six-month is a rolling period that you owe, or, or three months' billings for when you finally make your mind up.
Okay, so if we give the six-month termination notice now, does that remove the need to put the 30-day cancellation? So we're going to do one or the other?
Right, that's one or the other. That's what we're asking, one or the other.
And then at the end of six months, you just decide what you want to do. Give a new contract.
Are we ready to opine on this?
Well, you're asking for direct, you're not asking for action, you're asking for direction. Or are you asking us to make?
We are asking that you give notice under the contract, because without, we can't give that notice. We can't terminate the RBH's contract. Without you giving us that notice, we can't send it. It doesn't start the clock ticking. And we wish we could have worked this out before we, it got before you, but it didn't. We ended up a little bit at loggerheads, maybe it was a little failure to communicate, but that's where we are tonight.
And the only thing that confuses me is, not, not, one of the things that confuses me is that this recommendation that the board of directors provide direction to staff. Normally, when you give you guys, we give you direction, it's to come up with some, something that we're going to act on. That doesn't say that right here.
It's, it's a staff report, right? You have, it's just our, it's just a staff report, doesn't, you know, if the district council's telling you another director, doesn't mean you have to go by what says in the staff report.
I got you.
I'd enter, we'll see, do we have a motion on? No, we don't. I'd entertain a motion. Well, I would move then that we proceed with the, the six-month termination, and that'll give us time to renegotiate, or it'll give us time to evaluate and then renegotiate if we so choose at the end of that contract. And I expect that would be the outcome.
I second.
Okay. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries. Engineers' report. Receive and file the monthly capital improvements project status report. I move receive and file in. Well, receiving file doesn't require a motion.
No, it doesn't mean, you don't have to motion.
There are no questions, I guess. I thought he might want to give us a report, but that's okay. Okay, receive and file. Declaration of conflict of interest, recusal and referral to alternate district engineer. Move approval. Here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, declaration of conflict of interest, recusal, referral, alternate director, engineer. Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's report.
No items this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Attorneys' report.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President. I'll see you a little later in closed session, though.
Oh.
Local meetings. I did have a, Orange County Sand District general meetings, not later this week, but I, we did have a committee meeting, and nothing real urgent, but they, they did award a contract for the vessel, marine vessel, Nerissa engine rebuild. And that's, that's our, well. So the staff don't have to pedal? That's right, that's right. It's saving some energy there. But it's $130,000 to refit the engine, so. And then one other. Well, I just, this is, receive and file, Orange County Sanitation District, mid-year financial report for the period ended December 31st. It was approved. That's all I have from that. Anybody else?
There was no SARF meeting this month. We have it next month.
Mike?
That's me.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So ISDOC, on the ISDOC, it was on Thursday, January 30th, and at that time, we had a speaker, Kelly, but then Kelly suddenly was called out. It was on your voice, your, your vote and your choice. And Justin, who is the operation manager, came in in his place. But it was well-attended, a lot of people there, because we didn't know what was going on in the voting, so it was important to do that. So we went through that, and then, what else, the voters, then they said on election night, the main thing is, we'll never know who made it, because it's going to take a longer period of time. It might take one or two weeks, the way it's being done. So just so you know, that if you think you're staying up till late, you still won't know what's going on. And, let's see what else, go to the vote center. And then they, they told us all the voting centers to go to, which is all over the city, which I'm sure you're aware of. So that's that. And then the next meeting would be on April 30th for a quarterly. And at that meeting, I don't know who the speaker is yet, they haven't said, we were talking about.
They're trying to get one of the board supervisors.
Yeah. It could be a board supervisor, maybe it could be somebody else, they don't know. So we'll see. Let's see, what else? Am I missing anything?
The speaker, I don't know if you guys remember Nick Veridino, who was on the Fair Board?
Yeah.
It was his son that was the speaker.
What?
I went up to him afterwards, and I said, are you, are you related to Nick? And he says, that's my dad.
Oh, I didn't know that. Hmm, interesting.
Nick Bernardino?
Veridino.
Veridino.
He's the union guy.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so that's on that. Then, let's see, on ISDOC, what else is there? Oh, Vicky Osborne, who's a director of emergency management, she attended the meeting, and in the future, she'll be talking to us. In fact, we should probably have her speaker, because it'd be interesting to see what she has to say. And, and, that's under management workshop. Then there's a workshop on 700, which I think three of us are going to go to. It's on March 17th, on a Tuesday, so that you know. And then we'll find out what we have to declare and what we don't have to, because as I recall last year, when I did it with CSDA and their attorney, that it was surprising, there wasn't as much that you had to declare that, you know, they have a certain estimate, so we'll find out. Then also.
Gina, when, when are those 700 forms due?
Don't send me one, I've already turned mine in.
What, 700 form?
Yeah.
I don't have one.
She's going to save your reminder.
Oh, okay.
Might as well send me one, too.
Do you have to send them a copy of the 700 form to fill out, too, or not?
You can get them off the website.
I know, I know. I just thought maybe Mike, for their sake.
Okay, so then on CSDA, I may as well go into that and get it over. There's an annual conference Wednesday, the 24th of August, 25th and 26th, and it's down in Palm Springs, or Palm Desert.
What are those dates again?
Palm Desert.
I know what dates.
August.
August 24th, 25th and 26th.
Palm Desert.
Indian Wells.
It's actually Indian Wells, yeah.
Yeah, Indian Wells, you could call it, for those who understand and live there part-time.
And they have air conditioning there?
They're better.
Yeah. And this is a good, it's a Marriott, it's a good hotel, and you'll enjoy it, and everything's done inside, so you won't get the heat, and we're not even having a golf tournament, so you don't have the heat of that.
We stayed there once for a casa.
It's a good location.
Yeah.
They've just, CSDA's not having a golf tournament.
Right. Because it's too hot.
Have we received information on that yet first?
Oh, you will be. Nothing's out, really. The only thing that I did, I.
I'm just thinking about booking a. I'm just thinking about booking the rooms, you know, I don't know when you have to do that.
Oh, yeah. I'll let you know as soon as we, usually we get a block that we need to do. But the price was good, so that, you know, it's worthwhile. And then let's see, there's a, a leadership academy, April 19th, 20th, 22nd. It ends the 22nd in San Diego. So some of us are going to that. And then what else is there? There's a legislation meeting that I'm going to in March, which is March 5th and 6th. So I'll be up there then for that ledge meeting. And let's see, then there's Waco. And at Waco, what do we have? We had, oh, they, they talked about the rezoning of high density and looking at the density. That 68% is blocked, it's already built out in Costa Mesa, so interesting. And, and BIA is, they're sitting at the table with them, so that's good. And I guess. And then water management plan for 20 years. They're putting a water management plan for 20 years. And every five years, they will update it and be sure that, you know, it goes along with the verification plan. And let's see, who do we have, we program? The moderator, they, it was different because they had a, which some of us were there, I, some of you.
Four of us were there.
Yeah. Anyway, they had a panel, which was good. So everybody got to speak on the panel, you know, about what was going on regional wise in Orange County. And 3.3% looks at best places for growth. Orange County is moderate in numbers. And I don't know, I have a whole bunch of stuff on outside, but I wouldn't even bother with that.
Add to that, Arlene?
They're talking about lack of the, the low income houses, you know, they're looking at that and seeing what they can do on that. And placenta homes look to be achieving the laws and doing what they're supposed to be doing in placenta. So that, they said, you know, people should look at that. And SCAG was there and has a, a plan, a transit plan, to see how that goes. And the water use pushing to not have gross, oh, oh, I know. The water is going to not have high, they're having high density, so they won't have grass. That's what we're talking about. So it sounds like the grass might be going away, and I don't know what the gardeners will do. And affordable housing in Orange County is a challenge. And they talked about the cost is out of sight in Orange County. That was about it for that. And that's it.
Can I add to one thing to Arlene? Because we attended Waco, four of us. And I was concerned about Barry Curtis. I think Barry Curtis is the Costa Mesa planner, and he was one of the panelists.
Oh, yeah.
And that, and one of the things, like I brought up before, Costa Mesa only has 60 acres of land that's available for building projects. And they have eight years to get 12,000 units built, this is by state mandate. And, and they have, they have 3,000 units already and several units being planned. And they're telling like the district, the sanitary districts, we have to make sure that we have, who's going to pay for the capacity of the new homes going in. And I thought, you know, I would bring that up to you because I think we, we already checked, because that's what Rob used to do, he used to check to tell us the capacity of the lines. And they didn't know who was going to have to pay for those new lines going in. I know, that's, I know. But then they said that they weren't sure who was going to have to pay for them. But, and like Arlene said, they're going to have to rezone in Costa Mesa to get areas for high, higher density units. And they're going to have to rezone all of those properties that are potential knockdowns and rezoning. So that could, that could affect us also.
At BEEP PAR 2, they also said that Costa Mesa has a sewer problem with the, the work for all these homes that are coming in and, and that they don't have it very organized. They do not have sewer to work with.
Well, that's somewhat what they said, but they just wanted us to be aware. I mean, as, I was, I was looking at the sanitary districts responsibilities, we have to be aware of these new projects going in, that they have the capacity, you know, and other cities don't have the capacity, that they're going to have to find ways to fund it. That's, that's adding on to what Arlene said.
I think we, we had a hydraulic study done, I think by EEC. You know, it gave us some plan for what capacity we have. The sewage flows are down, so the capacity, you know, the capacity is sort of up. I, I attended the Orange County Sand District and there are many small CIP projects and air quality projects. And they begin, they, they do staff presentation. They, they had one, I think, on the investment report and, and they're, and the beginning of their budget process. But I believe also Jim coming up maybe is, they're still negotiating with Fountain Valley. Orange County Sand District has bought four or five properties across the street. And, and so Fountain Valley is going to lose the property tax revenue. Alan, you might know about that. Fountain Valley is going to lose some property tax revenue. And Fountain Valley sort of thinks Orange County Sand District probably should make that up. So there, there's active negotiations concerning that issue. So it depends on what hat Alan is wearing that day.
It's a very contentious thing.
Yeah.
Actually, Colin's the one that's in the closed sessions about it, so he's not allowed to share.
No, I'm just saying that's, you know, that, that's what the closed sessions were.
I understand they, they're butting heads about it.
Hey. I have one more. I have one more. I attended the city council meeting. And the thing that interested me was they approved the push cart ordinance, that they're allowing push carts to sell food vendors on the streets. This is kind of state mandated, that they have to pass this ordinance to let them do it.
Don't worry, I'll let, we'll let it go.
And I thought this would be something that we could bring to the liaison committee to get more information from the city council about the push cart ordinance, how, I don't think it's going to affect us, but if you live in Costa Mesa, it could affect you because they could do it anywhere in a sidewalk. But they exempted the, they exempted two or three places that they couldn't do, and one of them was the fish fry. So we're exempt, they can't, they can't have a cart on the grounds of the city for the fish fry to sell their, you know, their, their, their things. And a lot of recommendations came from the public saying that, hey, if you're going to approve this, the, the owner of the push cart should be the one working it. One guy could have 10 different push carts and have 10 different people working it, so. But they had to pass this ordinance and it passed like last Tuesday. So just, that's more for the board and the board, you know, you could see a lot more push carts coming in that's selling food and different items. Yeah, I was kind of shocked myself. Mike?
Yeah, I'll just real quick on SDRMA, we had our board meeting early in the month. And a couple of the big things, transmission, we, we have some districts that we ensure their transmission lines, electric transmission lines, districts that are smaller districts up in Northern California. Well, our reinsurers came back and said, cut that off. I mean, so we have had to go back to all of our districts that have transmission lines with a new exclusion. And our CEO and service, member services director have already gone out and visited these districts. And believe it or not, none of the districts were surprised that we cut off the coverage for electric transmission line. They, they knew it was common. And it's, it's just a matter of fact. Probably, but the biggest news at our board meeting was, the day before the board meeting, I received a phone call from our chief financial officer, Heather Thompson, with her resignation from her position at SDRMA. So we are now looking for a chief financial officer. Then tomorrow I will, I hate to do this, but I have to head to Monterey to attend the Public Agency Risk Management Association Annual Conference on behalf of SDRMA. So I will be out the rest of the week, suffering in Monterey, Gina.
It's supposed to rain every day.
It's Monterey. It's going to be cold anyway. So that's all, Jim. Oh, one, what, if I may, one more quick, I don't, I don't know if this qualifies, but I want to congratulate our, my two colleagues for making the big time and being on KTLA news last night, the, with the, with the coronavirus. Thank you guys for going. I wish I could have been there, but I appreciate you two going. And it was so nice to see them on TV. By the way, the court ruled that the injunction is being continued until next Monday.
Oh, really?
That gives the state of Alabama a chance to file their brief on, you know, they're either going to go to Alabama or Costa Mesa.
That, that's the two options, really?
That's, that's what they're kind of boiling it down to. That's it.
Got one other thing, Jim.
But did you know that they just, this, well, they, they're not having anybody at Fairview Hospital as far as the homeless? The feds decided that against it, that it doesn't work, that they couldn't put them there, they couldn't service them.
Everything's deteriorated there, for one thing, including sewers.
They won't let homeless people go in there, but they'll let people infected with a virus go in.
Yeah.
I'm going to be attending a meeting on Wednesday of this week, the city's having, about the expansion of Adams Boulevard from all the way down to the riverbed. And I'm going to see if, I don't know if you know about this, Scott, you know, I don't, is that going to affect us at all in terms of things that we're doing on? Because they're going to be digging up the street and changing the sidewalks and so. Because the sidewalk is going to go right in front of our, you know, our pump station there. So I'm going to attend that meeting and get more information. This is the, it's invited to all the people in Mesa Verde or everyone in the city. But I think that, so I'll give you a report next time. It looks really beautiful on the design and they're, I'm not sure how they're going to do it, keeping the three lanes on each side and then two bicycle paths. You know, because that's a date, that's a fast, thorough fare.
They're going to do both sides?
I, I, that's like Bob said, I thought they'd take this, they have a big center divider, they probably shorten it down. But that's coming up on Wednesday.
On the Adams Freeway, you're talking?
Yeah, Adams Freeway. That is dangerous.
I've got one thing under, new business, and that is, I ran across this article about Portland installs turbines in the city water pipes to create free electricity. They're actually doing that now, and the city of Riverside is doing an experimental thing on it. But they, they expect to generate $2 million worth of free electricity in the near future from, and it's got a picture of one in here. You just stub it in on this side, stub it in on that side, and then they got the thing whirling around, you know? I think, I think it's something we, every city ought to look at. And if you can't get a lot, a lot of it done in a reasonable period of time, just do it over time because you're going to save some money.
Is that a water district doing that? Or is it?
City of Portland's doing it.
That a water district?
I think they do their own water.
Yeah, yeah, it's hydropower.
It's where they go.
But my point is we ought to have somebody look into this. Riverside would be great, just, we could, you know, I'll volunteer to drive out there, maybe with their engineer, but this could be something that, a lot of the, the solution to a lot of the problems we were just talking about.
Water district people there at that meeting that you, is this an article you found?
No, this is an article.
Maybe, maybe they don't, aren't aware of it, just for.
Sure, yeah. So if I could get some assistance from our fearless leader, I'll, I'll go out there and talk to them anyway. Okay. I think it's time for, now's the time to adjourn to closed, no, yeah, closed session. Going into closed session? People who don't need to be here should leave. We're in open session. The board voted to waive any conflict, positive or negative interest, and to have the same from.
Firm.
Same firm. Represent, okay.
General manager and the board.
General manager and the board, Hodges versus CMSI, no, A, CMSD. That was a funny. Okay. We've. All we have to do, yeah. Adjourn this meeting.